Welcome to the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County Primary Candidate Forum for Edgewood City Council Position Three. I'm Liz Kurnitz Thurlow of the League of Women Voters and I'll be the moderator. And on behalf of the League of Women Voters and our community sponsors, I welcome the candidates and the audience to this candidate forum. The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tohoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 101 years has been to empower informed and active participation with citizens in government. Candidate forms one of the many ways in which we do this. Anyone 16 or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website www.tacoma pierce l w v dot org. The candidates in ballot order for Edgewood Council Position Three are Ken Farthing, Joshua Schulkend, and Kristy Keith. We're happy to welcome them this evening. Thank you for being here. This year's primary election is August 3rd. You should have received your ballot by now if you're a registered voter. If you're not yet registered or have moved, you may register at vote wa dot gov by July 26th or at the county elections office through 8:00 PM on Election Day. And your ballot must be postmarked or placed into ballot drop box by 8:00 PM August 3rd. Any race with fewer than three candidates is not on your primary ballot as those candidates immediately move on to the general election in November. But this one has three candidates, so here we are. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters website www.tacoma pierce l w v dot org. Questions have been prepared by members of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our cosponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text to 253-906-4734. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. And we know that sometimes you have a question that you want to ask to one candidate, but because of our nonpartisan status and we try to keep it civil, this is not the place to do that. If you can reword your questions so it's acceptable, you know, adaptable to everybody, go ahead and do it. Our timekeeper today is Teri Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will hold up cards to let the candidates know when they have 60 seconds remaining, 30, 15, and when it's time to stop. When you see the stop card, you may finish a short sentence. Please stay in gallery view so that you can see me and the timekeeper Teri Baker. Please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourselves when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. And a reminder, civility is expected. Candidates have all received ground rules, which outline what we do and ask them to confirm that they will not comment on each other during the forum. And I ask you each to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which include addressing the issues and not making personal attacks. Please nod or say yes.
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 Each candidate will have up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate, and each candidate will be asked all of the same questions and have the same amount of time to answer. You do not have to use all of that time. That way we get to more questions. At the end, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. The order of the opening statements is in valid order, so Ken Farthing will make the first opening statement. Ken Farthing.
Good evening. My name is Ken Farthing. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm excited to be here. Very nervous. I've never been a part of something like this before. I have never been interested in politics, but being a member and a a resident of Pierce County and especially a resident of Edgewood, I want to be a part of something bigger than just me, something bigger than just my neighborhood. Being able to have a conversation at City Hall with the mayor, being able to stop and talk to police officers, being able to be a part of something greater than me is what's kind of nudged me in this direction. I, I have got to know a lot of I actually know all of my neighbors. We have 17 neighbors on our street. And being able to be a part of this community, not just the street I live in or the street I live on, but being able to be a part of Edgewood as a whole. I enjoy being outdoors. I enjoy the small town feel. I want to do what I can and do my part in keeping Edgewood what it's always been, which is a wonderful, small community. And as we grow, we can keep that small town feel, and that's, that's my goal. That's how I hope that I'm able to be a part of and be a voice for those small town living residents. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. Joshua Schulkend.
Yeah, my name is Josh Schulkend. I am a resident of Edgewood as well, obviously. And I have dreamed of really running for office for a long time. I majored in political science at University of Washington, and that's really where I first kind of started thinking, maybe I would have the chance to do that someday. I was, I was worked for a congressman for a little while after college and interned on DC. And then I went to pursue a master's degree and I took a class on Martin Luther King Jr. and the Civil Rights. And that inspired me to move with my family into transitional housing for those experiencing homelessness. And we did that for five years and really was a good friend, kind of befriended them, like got to know them and navigated them to community resources and services. That led me into seeing that common denominator among a lot of families experiencing homelessness was that they didn't came from a broken home and didn't have a supportive community around them. So that has, has led to my heart to really organize communities and especially after COVID and seeing just the isolation and a lot of the mental as well as physical effects, mental, social, emotional effects of COVID is really just prompted me that now is the time to get involved. And so I've started a nonprofit called Thrive Center. We organized a police fire softball game just recently, and we're going to be starting a fund. But what the way we want to do that, we want to organize communities through care, connection, completeness, and calling to build thriving communities in Edgewood. And care is about organizing for the basic and help people with basic needs. Completeness is about organizing classes to help people grow in body, mind, and spirit. Connection is about organizing social events and programs to help people connect. And calling is about organizing service projects and a leadership program. So I'm really excited about that and just happy to be a part of this forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Keith.
Thank you, Liz, and to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Smaller communities don't often have these opportunities to have candidate forums, so I'm very appreciative. My name is Kristy Keith. I'm a longtime community organizer and management consultant that works with nonprofits and small and medium sized companies that are experiencing difficulties or high growth, both of which are high conflict environments. And my job is to go in and assess the facts and figure out where, where we need to be going and get everybody on the same page and make sure that we have metrics to measure and make sure that we're going in the right direction at the right pace. I am a longtime community activist in the areas of women's and children's issues, family and education issues. I'm the board president of the Tohoma Community Land Trust, which puts land into a trust for in perpetuity to maintain reasonable housing prices. I live in Edgewood. I love our community and I think that we're experiencing growth in a way that is stressful for lots of folks and we need to be very careful over the next few years to make sure that we're doing it in a way that leaves opportunities, economic opportunities for all and make sure that welcoming all to Edgewood and is something that the city focuses on. I am very interested in making sure that we maintain our green spaces and walkability and community feel while we grow, which is inevitable.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now we come to questions. We're going to start with up to 90 seconds for each question and the order will rotate. So Josh Schulkend will answer the first question first. Edgewood City Council has formed a subcommittee to research additional ways we can address diversity, equity, and inclusion in the community. Where do you see yourself on that committee and what do you think it should be trying to accomplish and how? Josh Schulkend.
Thank you for that question. Yeah. So I was a part of, when I worked at Mountain View Community Center, which is Edgewood's local community center, part of something called Courageous Conversations. And it was just after COVID and just after, just kind of the racial unrest. And what I realized being a part of that experience, we had Micah Lundberg, who was the chief of police at the time, as well as a couple of different African American residents of Edgewood, as well as Jesse and Rosie Tomlin and myself. And just seeing how we were able to break down barriers just by having a conversation with people of color and people of different races, we really broke down barriers. So I, I see myself as, as really as an organizer, one to bring people together as, as I have done time and again, and, and begin to break down barriers. I would love to see the, the committee really begin to put on a multicultural event to bring, again, bring people together. I think the more we can bring people together face to face, the more we can have conversations, the more we can begin to really see barriers break down. I would also love to see a chance for, to kind of study, where are we at as a city with representing people of color in our city staff and on our council? And so I would love to do a study to say, what is the percentage of people in our community that represent the different people of color, the different races? And see how is our city staff representing that? And if they're not representing that, then finding out why, why are we not representing that?
Thank you. Kristy Keith.
Thank you. Equity and inclusion is part of a very important issue for me. I spent the last four years, almost four years at the Seattle Children's Museum and we did a very, very large and arduous turnaround, both economic but mainly culture. And we moved from two staff of color to almost half and instituted multiple languages, re-engineered the exhibits and curriculum, curriculum to include native voices and to make sure that we had curriculum that put the children and families that attend the museum in the position of being able to see and participate in, in the curriculum in a way that related to their lives. We changed our staff and made, made sure that the educators were, were fully committed to an anti-racist approach and, and had a full commitment to anti-racism. This involved a lot of moving parts and was a difficult transition. And I believe that I have the experience to help on the committee to move Edgewood where we need to be as far as justice, equity, and diversity and inclusion. And I will play a big part in, in the, the committee and hope that we have great outcomes.
Thank you. Ken Farthing.
That's a fantastic question. I diversity and inclusion is, is very important to me. Being able to involve anyone and everyone regardless of age, race, sexual identity is, is so important in today's day and age. You know, raising an eight-year-old and a 12-year-old in this community, we, we welcome any and all. And being able to share our hearts and share our lives with anyone and being able to, to explore those multicultural differences. We, we invite any and all to our home with open arms. And I want to take that with me into the city council and invite the community to be a part of. When we, when we segregate or we exclude certain people, it's a reflection of us. And I, I want to be able to stand up and be proud of who I am to not just me, but to my family as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kristy Keith will answer the next question first. And so many questions are coming in and we already have a lot that we're going to go to one minute and we're going to try to do it. So talk fast. Same basic subject. What can the city and does the city need to do to truly achieve racial and gender equality?
Racial and gender inequality is a large topic. The city first and foremost needs to look at their own internal hiring practices to identify and remove biases, whether they are above the table or below the table. Because biases exist, especially in hiring. We've got good diversity so far in our hiring and we can always do better. But the very first and foremost, we should look internally. Secondly, we should make sure that there's opportunities for economic development for all, especially Black, Indigenous, and people of color in our city and in our economic development path. We're short on time, so I'm going to cede the rest of my time.
Thank you. Ken Farthing. I'm muted.
The, the racial injustices in, in our community, if, if we attack it head on as a, as a community, instead of letting someone else deal with it, pushing it off to someone else, another committee, being hands-on and being a part of any and all. I, I love the fact that we have a very colorful police force. It shows our, our inclusion for all races in our community and being able to, to to show our, our residents that, that we do include any and all. And I hope to be a part of, of hiring practices and being a part of a community that accepts anyone and everyone.
Thank you. Josh Schulkend.
Yeah, like I said before, I think what we need to basically do an internal audit. We need to know how, what is the, what is the percentage of people of color, of genders in our community and how is our city, is our, is our city representative of that? I think that's, that's one thing. And so that's just looking at census data and doing, looking at that. And then just looking at who is in our city and does, is that city representative? City, is our city representative of our community or our city? If not, looking at, at why, what, what are the reasons? What are the practices that are going on that could potentially be causing that? I think a big part of any hiring practices is a lot of about, about relationships. So I think it's really important that we have a leadership program that includes people of color, that includes all different kinds of people so that we create kind of a pipeline for, for staff and volunteers in the city to be able, that we have kind of an open sense to, for volunteers and staff.
Thank you. Okay, Ken Farthing is first. Edgewood is a rapidly growing small city. As such, there are issues which arise like housing, homelessness, traffic, keeping the small town feeling, and others. So we're going to try to discuss all of them. So first, Edgewood became a city, I've been told, to keep its rural feeling and avoid the development of a city. Over the years, many housing developments grown up and the rural atmosphere is somewhat disappearing. Do you think it's important to try to maintain it? And if so, what can you do to help that? And if you don't, please tell us why.
I think it is so important for Edgewood to maintain that rural, small-town feel. I have, I grew up in the Puyallup Valley and Edgewood has always been that, that higher class. And that higher class meant larger pieces of property, a, a rural, small-town feel. And if we're going to maintain that, we, we've got curbs and sidewalks that lead to nowhere. We need to decide if we're going to, we're going to have curbs and sidewalks for any and all? Or are we going to eliminate that? And the farmlands, the, the parks, the small community feel, I want to maintain that. And to do that, we need to address traffic and we need to do what it takes to make this city keep that feel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I, I think it is so important that we maintain that rural, small-town charm. I know a lot of people have moved to Edgewood actually because it seems like a peaceful place. It's a place that when you walk or drive around, people actually wave to each other, which is, is really great. And so I think people move here because they are looking for that rural, small-town charm, that kind of slower pace of things where they can really build relationships. But at the same time, I know that growth is going to happen. And so it's really as city council members being intentional about the growth so that we are zoning, so that there's, we're not over creating too dense of population that could cause a lot of traffic problems because things like crime, drugs, and all those types of things. And so we're really, really just taking an innovative approach to zoning and making sure that we've got buffers between neighborhoods and, and ways that we can kind of keep that small-town charm. I would love to see more parks, but I think it's also going to be really important that we have a town square.
Thank you. Kristy Keith.
I moved to Edgewood because it reminded me of my hometown, which is a smaller town and, and rural and agricultural. And I believe that maintaining the small-town feel while bringing big-city economic opportunities and other things that, that big cities are known for is something that is achievable. I think that we need to focus on housing issues, traffic issues, and infrastructure, and finding ways to fund our already fantastic master plan that, that brings us shopping and multi-use housing and measures our density very carefully in the downtown core. But I think that we can stay a welcoming, small-town community if we're careful with our growth.
Thank you. Joshua Schulkend is first. Affordable housing is a huge need throughout the county and the country. Rents are rising, housing costs are way up, et cetera. Please share your ideas for creating affordable housing in Edgewood. What do you think is needed and how can it happen?
Yeah, so I actually have a background in, in housing. Most of it's, it's been dealing both with homelessness as well as just finding affordable housing. And so there's several different ways. I, I think one thing for, for people like college students and people that are working in the service, service industry, they often can't afford some of the home prices that are here in Edgewood. And so one thing, I was, I actually just went today and saw Wash, the Washington Tiny House Association and everything that, that they're doing and they're doing some amazing things. And I, I think we, a lot of times we think, you know, it's, so that tiny house is being one. I love that you talked about, that Kristy talked about multi-use housing. I think that's going to be so important. I've seen things like Habitat for Humanity, bringing that into a community to create more affordable housing as well as just single-room occupancy and shared housing.
Thank you.
With my time.
Kristy Keith.
Affordable housing is a complicated subject that requires multiple prongs to, to achieve. And of course, I'm a huge fan of land trusts. I'm, I'm steeped in the topic and in board president of a land trust. This, this puts the housing in perpetuity to maintain the affordability out of a certain AMI percentage. And I believe that's a very valuable tool. Block grants are a very valuable tool. Public-private partnerships are a very valuable tool. Also zoning. And I think that Edgewood is, is, has been very sensitive to these ideas, but you have to understand that there's only so much that as a city council, we can have direct effect over. So I believe that we need to activate our city council and reach out to the state and federal and county entities that can help us make sure that we provide affordable housing because those are funding sources that Edgewood won't have on its own.
Thank you. Ken Farthing.
This is a topic that I, to be perfectly honest, do not know a whole lot about. Being able to be on a committee with members that do have knowledge and information regarding this topic. I am eager to learn more. I do understand and I have firsthand knowledge of government assistance for those in need. And that is a, a huge help. Federally sourcing, locally sourcing, but at the same time, maintaining that rural feeling and keeping Edgewood a place that people want to be without without, I'm not going to say low-income housing, but without having a stigma of having having people that are different than what we have grown accustomed to having in this community. Thank you.
Kristy Keith is first. Of course, the next one is on homelessness, which is not just in big cities. How do you see Edgewood helping those who are unhoused or at risk of being unhoused while we try to build, build affordable housing?
Homelessness is a topic that I have spent a lot of time on. I started my own nonprofit for homelessness called People's Place. And there's, again, there's multiple fixes. The, you know, using community-based organizations, CBOs that are already established is a valuable tool. Leveraging the state and federal and county resources available is also a valuable tool. However, I think that Edgewood can also offer city tools. And those have to do with, you know, zoning to make sure that, you know, things like tiny houses are available somewhere in our city and also making sure that we're leveraging public-private partnerships because it's very difficult to outright use taxpayer dollars to help people. So that's why CBOs and federal dollars are available.
Thank you. Ken Farthing.
Homelessness in, in Edgewood is not something that is down the road. It's here now. When they, when the city of Puyallup closed access to the residential, or the people that were struggling residentially that were living on the river of Puyallup, it pushed it north. They came to Edgewood. They lived in the woods. They lived on, in vacant homes. But what that does is that brings in the, we go right to the broken window theory. We have homelessness and people squatting in vacant homes. It brings in vagrants. It brings in drugs. It brings in crime. So if we work as a community and work with neighboring cities to house these homeless, we are currently putting them up at the, uh, extended stay down here on Meridian. And that seems to work and has been working in the past. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Joshua Schulkund.
Yeah, so, um, I, like I said, I've, I've lived and worked among homeless families for almost five years. I was also a community resource navigator. And while I was there, so I was co-located at Pierce College in Clover Park Technical College. And while there, I, I had a woman come in and I was able to help her. Um, she was by herself, but she didn't have any, any homes. She was at risk of losing her daughter. And I was able to get her housed through shared housing. And then, um, as I built a relationship and got to learn her story, she disclosed that she had a drug addiction problem. And, um, then we were able to, to get her, to help the services to overcome that. Uh, we, we helped get her connected to counseling. So in other words, and, and actually, just to make a long story short, today, she's a homeowner. She's working at World Vision and she's doing great. So how, you know, homelessness is not just a housing issue. It requires a community support coming around it. So having the nonprofits, Rapid Re-Housing is a great program to get people housed, which pays for first and last month's rent, to get people into an apartment.
Thank you. Uh, Ken Farthing will answer first, and I'm jumping to some of the questions that have just come in. How would you engage more of the community, particularly marginalized communities, to engage in the city's boards and commissions as well as other shared governance opportunities?
Well, uh, I, I can take this question personally because I responded to an ad in the local Edgewood newspaper, the, the local, um, flyer that getting involved, being a part of, instead of hiding in the shadows, being a part of what's going on around us. And just getting the word out, um, being able to gather as a community. I love the fact that there's a part going in on Meridian, bringing families together and that word of mouth. I am anti-social media. I think face-to-face contact with people is the answer to being able to involve more and more people in not only the community, but in politics to make a change.
Thank you. Joshua Kind. You're muted. Did it freeze?
He's frozen.
I'd be froze, so why don't we go on to the back?
Oh. Joshua, can I do you back with us?
I am. Sorry about that. I think I, my internet froze. Um, yeah, I, I think it was about, well, can you repeat it actually?
Sure. How would you engage more of the community, particularly marginalized communities, to engage in the city's boards and commissions as well as other shared governance opportunities?
Again, I think it's really important to create a pipeline, uh, for leaders. So I think a leadership program is really, really important. And really being intentional about picking a diverse team that represents different, um, segments of the community. So have making sure we have, um, the, the all genders on there as well as people of color on there. Um, I was actually working with, um, a person of color to put together a leadership program. So I'd be really excited to put something like that together to get, to create that pipeline to help people get involved in, in leadership. I think also just continuing to put on a event and, and showcasing the city to the community so that people see as a lot of it is just, are we building relationships with people and getting out there? And, um, doing the work that we need to do to be able to, um, engage people right where they're at. I think social media, again, is, is, um, I, I agree. There's, you know, we, it's not the end-all, be-all. We have to be face-to-face, but it's really, really important that we engage people with social media as well.
Thank you. Kristy Keith.
Thank you. It's my experience that Black Indigenous and people of color participate in organizations, city mechanisms, civic life, when the work has already be, been done to make them feel welcome. And I think that the first thing that the city needs to do is make sure that they are a place that is welcoming to BIPOC and also to make sure that their voices can be heard. So very often, we, we advertise for people of color. We advertise for women and we bring them in. And their lived experiences aren't valued. They're spoken over. And it's clear that their actual input, skills, background, and experience aren't going to be put to use. So the first thing I think we do, um, before we do the outreach, reach to attract people is to work on ourselves first and make sure that our city is in fact welcoming.
Thank you. Okay, Joshua Schulkund will be first. Now I'm putting together two questions. Um, one says the city will be engaging and updating the comprehensive plan. What issues do, can you identify that may need to be changed or updated when it comes to land use development? And we're asked how you feel about the town center plan and the comprehensive plan. So if you mentioned town center in there, that's good.
Okay, yeah, um, so I would say two things. There's the town center. And then what was the other one again?
The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan. So, um, as far as I think, I think you mentioned land use. I would say with land use, we, we really need to be, um, careful that as we, we grow, we continue to protect the environment that we love around us. Um, I think with, as we, just making sure that our policies protect the wetlands, protect, um, the environment. I think green space is not unused space. It's important that we have that around. Um, I think as, as we continue to grow, that's really, really important. And so I, um, I think that's mentioned in the comprehensive plan. Also, um, the, uh, the town square, I think is, is going to be really, really important. Um, I love that's, right now, I think it's looked at on 24th, which I think could be, could potentially be a really great location. But in all honesty, I haven't fully read through everything. So, um, if the, if a resident has, you know, ideas or things on that, I'd love to, I'd love to get more feedback on it.
Thank you. Kristy Keith.
So Edgewood has a fully developed and long-in-place comprehensive master plan for growth that complies with the Growth Act from the state and also, um, puts Edgewood in a place to move forward. I, the, the plan is fabulous. I think I would be naive, if not arrogant, to believe that I could come in and have much better ideas than the hundreds of experts that have wa, worked on the master plan already. Our town center is well-planned. I think that what the council can do and what the city needs to do now is to march forward tactically and finish the plan. And that means funding it and making sure the development happens.
Thank you. Ken Farthing.
Well, this, this master plan to, um, bring Edgewood up and, uh, keep up with the, this, the state growth. Uh, the plan to, uh, use our lands for, uh, more housing, uh, while at the same time keeping this small-town feel, protecting the wetlands. Uh, living down here in the valley, the wetlands are, are very important. Uh, the more we build up on the hill, the more water is going to come down into the valley. Uh, this valley has very fertile soil. Um, and there's not a whole lot of, of vacant land left down here. I, I want to be part of a community that the residents are proud to be here and we're not stuck on the road for 45 minutes to an hour to run to the store. Um, so my, I want to be a part of making that master plan come together and work in a small-town feel.
Thank you. Okay, Kristy Keith will be first. Uh, speaking of green space and land use, 13 municipalities and Pierce County are jurisdictions served by the Pierce Conservation District. Edgewood is not. Do you think it should be? Why or why not?
I do believe that Edgewood should be part of the Conservation District. The Conservation Districts as, as put in place in Washington State are extremely valued, uh, valuable on, on topics that are often overlooked. From, from bees to land use to water quality. And, you know, the, the more effort and eyes that you can have on a topic, I think the more focus you have on a topic, the, the better your outcomes are going to be. And I absolutely believe that we should be part of the Conservation Districts sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Ken Farthing.
Being a part of the Conservation District, uh, protecting what brought the founding families of Edgewood together. The trees, the eagles, the, the hawks. Um, my neighbors down the street, they have three, three hives. We've got hundreds of flowers growing on our property for the bees to help pollinate, to keep this land beautiful. The gardens. I think having a community garden and being a part of a, a larger, a larger establishment to help protect what is so vital and important to this area, which is our land. If, if we just continue building more and more homes, we're going to have less and less land. So I think, I think it's important to be a part of that, yes.
Thank you. Joshua Schulkund.
Yeah, I think it's important to be a part of the Conservation District because they bring expertise and resources that we as a city would not have. They connect us to other ideas, um, in, in other areas. And so I think it'd be really, really important. Um, we actually have a really good biodiversity here in Edgewood. Just in my backyard, we have, um, bald eagles, blue herons, hawks. And so I think there's a lot of natural resources here in Edgewood that are, are worth protecting. And, and, um, just, you know, as, as well as obviously the bees. And just being able to get the, um, expertise and, and, and from the, the Conservation District. And the ideas will really help, uh, Edgewood to, as we continue for our intentional plan to move forward, to have those, that, um, expertise to speak into, um, kind of the land use issues and what we're supposed to do. So, yes, I'm for the Conservation, Conservation District, being a part of the Conservation District.
Thank you. Ken Farthing will be first. Change of topic. COVID is less of an immediate crisis than it was. But people, families, businesses, education, everything has been affected. What needs do you see as a result? And what plans do you have to help alleviate these needs?
Uh, what needs are there? I believe reintegrating people back into society, uh, to become a community again. We've, we've become hermits. We've become, um, antisocial. Going back to what I stated earlier is that I don't do social media. Uh, we have had a safe neighborhood for, uh, the last two years. Uh, and I, I would love to expand that out to have a safe community. And, and, um, talking with, with some of our, our city council members and talking with the mayor, uh, opening City Hall back up just this last week is so vital to showing our community that we are strong. We are going to, uh, pick ourselves back up and we're going to be a part of. We're going to make Edgewood shine again.
Thank you. Joshua Schulkund.
I think it's so important that we, um, begin to help people reconnect after COVID. I just, I know my, my son stayed home for most of the year, did online school. Also, again, when I was working at Edgewood's local community center, seeing a lot of the seniors that have been isolated was really heartbreaking. And it's actually this issue that has prompted me to start Thrive Center, a nonprofit, to organize communities to support families and individuals as well as to, to run for city council. And so I've organized a police-fire softball game. And one of the things that was so cool to see was just to see people connecting. And I, I heard somebody make a comment to me that, um, it was, just felt normal again. And it felt finally like, like we could reconnect. And so I think be, beginning, keep, can, continuing to put on social events, continuing to put on things to, to bring people together and to show that we are still strong as a community.
Thank you. Kristy Keith.
I just finished a very large contract for the Equity and Education Coalition, federal dollars for COVID, culturally appropriate COVID food relief. And I think that, you know, the, the world getting almost back to normal is, is something that some of us feel, but many don't. The, the historically marginalized are, are really hurting. And I think it is incumbent upon us as, as a city to, to make moves to, to fix that. The learning loss that has been experienced is devastating. We have children that have not had learning in their homes for at least a year. They do not have internet. They do not have laptops. And I think that using ARPA funds and reaching out for public-private partnerships and using whatever city bandwidth we have to help with basic needs, food, learning loss, and economic development is something that the city should focus on first and foremost.
Thank you. This will be the last question. I'm going to let you have 90 seconds. Um, Joshua Schulkund will answer it first. And it's big. Why are you the right candidate for this job? You've told us some things about what you've done and you will again, probably in your closing. What two or three special things can you bring to the council? Or can you do better than anyone else without mentioning anyone else, of course? And, um, please include your experience on, on any Edgewood boards and commissions. 90 seconds.
Yeah, so I'm, am, um, on HOA of my, my neighborhood, um, as well as involved in the North Pierce County Community Coalition. Um, I've, I've been involved in obviously my own nonprofit that's involved here. Um, and getting involved in a lot of other things too. And I think, so I, what I bring is I bring, um, 25 years of nonprofit experience and, and bringing that, that in, both dealing with, with homelessness, affordable housing, um, dealing with, with youth, uh, help. I've, I've worked with youth for seven years, um, of that as well as, um, spending some of that time working with seniors, um, working with family programs. So I bring, uh, just a wealth of nonprofit experience and, and leadership. And so I, I think one of the things too, I've, I've started a lot of things. I have an entrepreneurial spirit. So I'll bring a lot of vision. I, I know how to, how to start things, how to get programs going. So both vision as well as, um, how to build relationships and, and build teams. And I think that's going to be really important, like I said, because I want to continue to build, um, volunteers as a volunteer movement in Edgewood about people getting, getting involved and, and making a difference. So, um, I think I bring, I bring vision. I bring leadership experience. Um, I bring just, um, a lot of, I, I, ideas, a lot, a wealth of relationship. And then also I've been involved in politics. I've worked at every level. I've worked for federal government. I've worked the state government and I've worked at, at county and city. So, um, I just bring a lot of experience both in nonprofit and government, um, planning.
Thank you. Kristy Keith.
One of the things that I think I bring to the party is that I have spent my career looking at data and figuring out what is true and what is not true and building strategies around that. Following up with a collaborative plan to get people on board to, to move forward and measure, rinse, repeat. And I think that solving problems with, with fact-based measurement is, is something that I'm good at and something that is definitely necessary in a city environment. I bring experience with federal dollars. I bring experience with legislation. I bring experience with city government and, um, also have, um, a great deal of experience, many, many years of experience, um, with nonprofits and, you know, building consensus around an idea until it reaches, reaches tipping point. I think that Edgewood is, is well-run. I think that we've got great people in the council and in city government. And it's the city council's job to, to help bring resources to, to break the bottlenecks that are existing in, in city government. And I think reaching out for state, federal, and city dollars is something that I have experience with and can do.
Thank you. Ken Farthing.
Uh, as for experience in, in, uh, the political scene, uh, I have, uh, been on the Edgewood Code Enforcement Board for the last uh, year. Uh, we have not met in person. We are, this last month was our first hybrid meeting. I am looking forward to this next month, being able to meet these men and women that I have been on this Code Enforcement Board Committee with. Um, I'm looking forward to meeting them face-to-face. And aside from that, I have no political experience. So what am I bringing to the table? I'm bringing a new face. I'm bringing, um, I'm bringing just I'm bringing just me, my ability to talk to people, not just in the city council, but the community, my neighbors, our our friends up on the hill, our community on the other side of the street in Milton and working together with Fife, with Milton, with Sumner, to build a community that is is a place that people want to be. The ones that are already here, let's keep them. The ones that aren't here yet, let's attract them. Let's maintain that small-town rural feel. But what I want to bring is I want to bring the ability to keep the good people here and invite more good people and fix the traffic on Meridian. That's what I want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements and I'm sorry we didn't get to all of the great audience questions. Each candidate has up to one minute for a closing statement. We reverse the order of the opening statements. And so Kristi Keith will give the first closing statement.
Thank you. So we have a primary, which means two of us will go to the general and vie for your vote in the general. I ask for your vote and appreciate your support, each and every one of you. I also think that understanding growth under the State's Growth Management Act and how that translates to our ideas and our plans within the municipal city governments is critical for city council members. And I think that that's something that I bring to the party and I'd appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Uh Ken Farthing. Oh, sorry, backwards, backwards, backwards. Um Josh Schilkund.
Yeah, thank you. I am excited to to be a part of this race. I would really appreciate your vote. I remember when I was a senior in high school, I saw my friends hanging out in the parking lot and getting drunk on the weekends and realized that we needed a teen center. So I wrote to our local newspaper and told them that I wanted to raise money through um garage sales and car washes for a teen center, uh not knowing that it was going to cost two million dollars. Um the woman at the time brought me in, uh she was the publisher of the newspaper and had me um get involved in Teen North Shore, organizing teens to plan and participate in community events. And I got the city of Woodinville, where I grew up, the YMCA, and this Teen North Shore, this organization involved. I got two hundred students involved in helping students plan and participate in community events. That was a really formative experience for me. And I believe that in bringing community together, the community has the skills, has the resources, it has the social opportunities, and it has the the ways to serve that will really support a community as it needs. So I think our community has everything we need to thrive. We just need to mobilize it and see people come together.
Thank you. Ken Farthing.
Why vote for me? I I struggled with this question when I was filling out my my ballot the other day. And I talked to my dad, who's a longtime Edgewood resident. And he said, if you didn't think you were the best person for the position, you wouldn't have ran. I didn't feel right voting for myself. Ultimately, I did. But it's because I took a step back. I read each of our profiles and I want to bring fresh blood. I want to bring a vision of hope for the community of Edgewood, for the residents that are here, and build a community that we can all be a proud of belonging to. And I truly feel that I belong to the city of Edgewood, not only as a resident, but as a city city council member as well.
Thank you. Thank you all. In reverse ballot order, the candidates for position three, Edgewood City Council are Kristi Keith, Joshua Schilkund, and Ken Farthing. You should have received your ballot. Contact Pierce County of Elections if you have not. A reminder, ballots are due in a drop box or must be postmarked by eight PM on Tuesday, August third, and earlier is better. I would like to thank the candidates, Kristi Keith, Joshua Schilkund, Ken Farthing, the timekeeper Terry Baker, the Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters, and our community sponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, Grid City Co-op, Latinx Unidos South Sound, South End Neighborhood Council, SenCo, Sumner Waller Community Association, the Tacoma Urban League, Vibrant Schools, and the YWCA of Pierce County. You can see this and other League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County candidate forums at www.tacoma-pierce-lwv.org. Read your voter's pamphlet. Look at vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office and read the candidates' websites. You can track your vote at www.votewa.gov. Please do all you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote. Thank you. Thank you all.